Well, good morning, everyone. It's glad to see you. I have ten o'clock. It's a pleasure to welcome you as one of the part of our county government. Appreciate your interest. At this time, I will call the October 24th Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session to order. It is a privilege to welcome our elected officials, which is Chief Gary Vellidge and District Attorney Dick Donovan. But all of your special guests for us, and we're glad to have you here. If, uh, make it a home, bring the list forward. Turn off your phones, please. And it is indeed a pleasure to have Pastor Johnny Dix from Pickens Mill Baptist Church. Fairly new to our county and new to Pickens Mill, and just a pleasure to have him here to bring us our dedication and lead us in the pledge of the flag. Thank you, Johnny. A spell for prayer. Dear Father, as we come to you today, we thank you for your many blessings upon our great nation. Thank you, dear Father, for its leaders, and we pray for them today. Then, dear Father, our state, this great state of Georgia, we pray for its leaders as they lead us today. And then locally, we pray for our county and those who serve our county and its leaders. Dear Father, we ask your blessings upon Paulding County and the business that be transacted today. Your Father, we pray that this place would be a great place, not only to raise a family, but to live. Your Father, we pray for your blessings upon our county and, Lord, your watch care over our citizens. Your Father, we ask today that you would give guidance and counsel. And, dear Father, I pray that you would lead each one of us in paths of righteousness for your name's sake. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen. May I direct your attention to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again, Pastor Dix. The minutes of our 10th, 2017 work session, along with the regular board meeting minutes, are available for review. This is a great time of year to go to the Silver Comet. Fall is so beautiful, and our positively talling today is a little clip on that, so let's enjoy that together. Think you had that webcam on Commissioner Crowe's helmet, is that true? It's always a pleasure to have District Attorney Dick Donovan with us, and especially today because he has a word of appreciation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While away, I've ridden almost all of Silver Comet. I rode it actually before it was paved, when the herd pulled up the tracks. We, the March Church, rode from Hyrum as far as we could go. And after it was paved, we've ridden every inch of it from Inka Jack, almost to the end. But one Sunday, my wife, the major, and I went Cedar Town to go down the mountain. We figured we'd, that was the only part we hadn't done. So we started out from Cedar Town. It got late. We got to Eastham Hill. For those of you that don't know, you don't want to be in Eastham Hill after dark. And I said, "Excuse me, but did you think to bring your service weapon?" And she said, "No, I figured you did." And I said, "No, I forgot." Well, I haven't ridden all of it, but I've ridden almost all of it, and I've ridden all of the Chief LaDiga Trail. And it's a great ride, and a great thing for Paulding County to have it right here. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, Ms. Pollard, others, I am here this morning to say thank you. To all of you, you must have known that for many, many years, we have been training people in Paulding County to work in other district attorney's offices for a long time. Prosecuting Attorneys Council pays some of my employees, state employees, but the majority of my employees are county paid. It has been very difficult for me, over the last nearly seven years, to hire people and see them come and go, because we were not able to pay them what the market paid them if they went somewhere else. Very recently, we had a survey done by prosecuting, by the District Attorneys Association and Prosecuting Attorneys Council, on starting pay for ADA's in the state of Georgia, brand new, right out of law school, fresh hired assistant DA's. And we were asked to tell the chairman of the Prosecuting Attorneys Council what our starting pay was. And I submitted that our starting pay was $40,000 a year. After about two weeks, we got an email from the chairman saying that the range was from $58,000, brand new, to $40,000. And I felt pretty bad, because that meant we were at the bottom of the barrel. Now, I know that if you give me $40,000 to buy a car, I can go out and buy an adequate motor vehicle. But if you give me $53,000, I can buy better cars. Everybody knows that. We tried to make up for the lack of pay by making my office a convivial, convenient place to work. We do everything we can to make the employees happy. But we've lost quite a few. Mark Robinson came to us from Georgia State School of Law as an intern. He actually tried jury trials before he passed the bar, but as soon as he passed it, I gave him the job. Paid $40,000 a year. I asked him for a two-year commitment. He couldn't make it. His wife had another baby. He said, "I cannot go. I cannot survive on this." And I said, "I understand." And he went to work for it in private practice. Tony Norton came to us from Mercy University. Great prosecutor, fresh out of law school. He said, "What can you pay me?" I said, "40,000." He said, "That's what I figured, but I understand this is a good place to work." And he stayed for a little over three years, and he went to Cobb County as a misdemeanor prosecutor, because they could pay $10,000 or more dollars a year. Peggy Ramey was a victim witness advocate that lives here and now, after working in my office, went to the KIAC. Even though it takes her over an hour to get there, and they didn't give back, it's worth it to her, because they paid her more money for working at the KIAC. Lacy Markova did exactly the same thing. She left here to work somewhere else. I was hobbled, because I could not hire the best, or even the better candidates. I want to thank you for recognizing and addressing our needs. And I want to tell you about two different things. My juvenile prosecutors, a young lady named Alex Clark, she also came to us right out of law school. She's great at what she does. She's been here over two years. She loves prosecuting in juvenile court. Judge Miller loves her, which to me makes a big difference. And when I told her that she was going to get an increase in salary, she said, "Well, that's great news. My husband has been after me to quit and get a job that pays more money," which obviously she could have done. She said, "I told him I liked working here, and I didn't want to do that. And I was going to get another job doing something else on the side, so I could keep working here." She told me, she said, "Now, with this increase in salary, I won't have to do that." She's very happy to be able to stay with me. The other instance are two young ladies, Casey, Sarah, stand up. There's Sarah. They're going to get their bar results on Friday about four o'clock. They thought they were going to get a job paying $40,000 a year. They're very happy to know that it will be a better pay. And I'm very happy to know that it will be better, because they have done excellent work as interns in my office, and I am seriously looking forward to hiring them and keeping them. My office will now be able to better serve the people of Paulding County, because continuity and quality will help our citizens and the victims in Paulding County. So for all of us, the assistant DA's, the administrative assistants, our investigators, and our victim witness advocates, and most especially for me, we are all grateful for your understanding, for your understanding in addressing our needs. All my thanks, and we don't stand enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you. Thanks for the, uh, thanking for the thank you. But what you did say is you weren't on a bike, you were on a golf cart. That's okay.
No, sir, I've got a Trek 820 and a Trek 830, and I'll outride you in any minute. First bike ride I've ever had, my sister took me in the Alamo Flat Street, because ours was like this. She taught me to ride, and I got to the top of the hill, and she said, "Okay, you can ride down the hill to the house." And I drove right into the side of the police car driven by the man living next door. I don't have a lot of experience on my car.
I'm going to have to soup up my golf cart.
We are extremely happy to have all of the people from the DA's office here today, and your contribution to the county are immeasurable, and so appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we'd be exceeded. We've got work to do.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Operation Section Manager Felicia Mitchell with 911, with E-911, for her dedicated service to the community. Tell us some more about Ms. Mitchell, David.
I'm glad I could tell you about her, but I'll stick to what I've got to notice. I'm really happy to be able to present this to Felicia. She's our Operation Section Manager. She began her employment in 2003, left briefly, came back. 2011, she became a supervisor, and then in 2016, she was promoted to Operation Section Manager. Her position in the 911 Center is that she actually is over operations, so she handles the day-to-day operations, and there were supervisors of each shift reporting to her. So that's what, that's what her job is. She has a very, very big responsibility. She, uh, she's a member of the tactical dispatch team. She's, uh, involved with the 911 for Kids program. And since she assumed the position of Operation Section Manager, she's really adapted to and, uh, and learned her new duties. She was pretty instrumental when I was moving into the 911 Center, too, so she helped us with that, which was a big, uh, a big burden on everybody, and she helped alleviate some of that off of the, uh, off of myself and the deputy director. Uh, she's had a big, huge growth as a leader within the agency, so she takes on any assignment that she's given. She's, uh, really focuses her attention on her staff to make sure that they have what they need. She's, uh, worked really hard diligently to improve communication between the operations side and the admin side. And there's sometimes that gap between the folks who do the job and those of us who sit back and try to tell them how to do this job, you can come and do it every day. Felicia's helped kind of fill that gap in, and she's, she's closed that communication gap between, uh, she, she used to do that job, and she grew up in that job. And so she's, she's very good at that. She listens to her staff's ideas, their complaints, and what they need, and she takes action on that, the discipline. Sit around, so as a result of that, and around our shifts, we've seen, uh, some great improvement that she's taken over as, as the section manager. She, uh, she provides guidance and direction, and she doesn't micromanage, and people that know me know that I don't like micromanagers. I tend to promote people who don't do that. She, she's, she updates outdated procedures, she comes up with new ones if procedures need. I mean, she's just a well, well-rounded employee. Uh, she's a dedicated employee. She leads by example. She's always the first to jump in to get help done. I come in on the weekends, and she may be in there working a couple days, so that somebody can have a day off, or have shortage, or if somebody needs to take a lunch break, or take a break, she's in there working instead of in her office. So she helps out her employees, make sure they have what they need to do. Not uncommon, find her working one of those positions. So we want to, uh, and every now and again, she gets picked on me by me at work. She's very, 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 uh, well-known. Very well-rounded. She does her job very well, even when she has to deal with, with the director. So if you will join me and congratulate Felicia, she does an excellent job.
Public Safety Appreciation Award, this award is presented to Felicia Mitchell in recognition of outstanding service for communities presented by the Board of Commissioners. Congratulations. Great facility.
Is your mom here?
Uh-huh.
So when we get here this morning, as happens most every meeting, um, we have something from our Elections Director of Encouragement, Ms. Deirdre Holden. And I don't, I think she probably talked to my wife, because she gave all of us a rock, and mine says patience, which means that's what I need. So thank you, Deirdre, and also a verse from Isaiah, thank you for that, and she's going to take it and out.
Um, I just kind of stepped out, hoping y'all wouldn't speak this morning. I wanted to invite not only the Commissioners and Mommy and all of you, but I'll invite the public. Paulding County was chosen a couple of weeks ago to kind of showcase what the future of voting is going to be. Um, it's not going to happen tomorrow, it's not going to happen, you know, next year. We're looking at probably a three- to five-year, um, period. But, um, I'm inviting you to come Wednesday, uh, no, I'm sorry, Thursday of this week to the cafeteria. We're going to have what the new voting system will look like. So I encourage you to come see that. It's actually a system that will print out your receipt. You can look at it and put it into a machine, and it's tabulated automatically. So I'm excited, I'm excited they chose us to be a part of this. So if you're interested in this, please come see us at 10:00 AM on Thursday. Thank you.
The agenda says we don't have any invited guests, but, uh, I do.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sure you have. I have to overlook our, one of my favorites, Parks and Recreation. And it's good to have Michael Justice here, gives us an update on the new park.
Thank you. Before I do that, I'd like to make a request. If you put Chief Elbrey in to timeout for just a few minutes, he's harassing me a little bit of the morning.
I'll make a motion.
One thing, before we do get to the, the new park stuff, I'd like to invite you all out this coming Saturday, Earl Duncan Park at Paulding Meadowses. We live in county, it's either the 20th or 21st Annual Trick or Trick Village that we do for the kids every year. It takes a ton of people, a lot of county staff, and even more volunteers to pull that off, and thank them in the past. Two to seven this Saturday at Earl Duncan Park. Come out, that'd be great. We're going to open a new park for you, uh, in the western portion of the county. It's finally here, um, November the 14th at four o'clock in the afternoon. We'll do the ribbon cutting there. Now, be mindful that there's still a little bit of activity there, uh, not much. You know, there's still some growing in time, there's a bunch of items and some, as my mother would say, some piddly things that, that we need to do to finish it up. Couple of things to note, you know, this is phase one of this project. Uh, you'll still see some things there that look like they don't belong for a little while, and one of those is two great big piles of dirt. That, that's there for a reason. If you can remember, back when we started the project, there was a pond in a small lake that was proposed there. That's the damn dirt. That's the dirt that we use for the dam. We, during the process, we were permitted to, uh, to construct the pond, but we were not allowed to build the dam. Makes perfect sense to me. So anyway, that's what that's there for. We have to show a need for irrigation, and that's what we'll do with the, with the water that's there. Had to prove that to them before they'll give us the permit, so we'll begin working on that as soon as we open the park on the 14th. So that'll be the next one, and get the agenda for us there. Again, Mulberry Rock Park, November 14th, uh, at four o'clock after you guys finish up at the two o'clock business. It's located adjacent to Skoggins Middle School there on Mulberry Rock Road. So if you can come and join us there, we'd love to see you. Thanks for your help in getting that project done, and the patience as well.
Look forward to that, Michael. Thank you for your work. It's a beautiful park. Those of y'all that, most of you probably haven't went out there, because it's under construction, but it's absolutely beautiful. Walking trails, playgrounds, really neat. I'm probably too old and too big to get on the playground, but it's, it's really a neat playground. The facilities are wonderful, and, uh, looking forward to that. Folks out there deserve that. It's been a long time coming, and I appreciate your work.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, it's, it's a beautiful facility.
Thank you.
Looking forward to that. And I know that once we open it, we have other things we're going to be doing, and of course, the grass planting and different things. It's coming along, but there'll be more that needs to happen through the fall and next spring, and, uh, that's all planned out. But you guys come out there on that day, and, uh, it'll, it'll be another, kind of like a wide-eyed park.
That's great. It is passive in nature. There's, um, three miles of trails out there now. Some of those are paved, some of them are not. They're quiet all the way around the park and through the park with several different distance options for you. Plenty of pavilions, open air, and there's one enclosed pavilion as well, and you mentioned the playgrounds. You, you are deserving an aspect of that that we'll be continuing to work on as well. Ask me the budget question, please.
Yeah, this is a great plan of things. How are we, Michael?
We're in good shape. We're, we're going to finish that one under budget.
We, we had a meeting a few, a couple of weeks ago, Michael. And we were talking about a couple of other things to finish about, but he looked at me, he said, "Now, um, I'm one dollar under budget, is that under budget?" And I said, "Yes, sir." And he said, "Okay, we're going to be under budget."
We're in good shape. We've, we've got some funds that we're holding. As, as you go out there, some of the areas are solid. It's, it's 100 acres, we've discovered there, yeah, 160 acres that we have. So it's been seeded several times. Obviously, with the change of seasons now, between cool and warm season grasses, we're going to have some bare spots where it just doesn't come in, you know, right now. But we're holding some money where we can come back in the spring when the weather changes and treat those areas again. Just a little growing in time and a little patience, it'll, it'll be beautiful out there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. On the agenda, we don't have any invited guests, but I see some guests that are very important to our, our county, and I'd like to recognize Mark Lethbridge from Brandon Cove. He used to keep us on track in steering our Whistle Creek Reservoir. I'd like to recognize Pastor Concord Franklin, who comes to praise for us sometime. He's the pastor of Mount Oliver Church. Nancy Hollingshed here, she is the chairperson, chairwoman, uh, of our Republican Party in Paulding County. It's always good to have her, and, and, uh, make this last one, just because I'm touched by what is done, and he would never tell anybody, but, uh, so Colonel Chad Hunting, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then the sheriff would want to tell us anymore. I believe the adoption of the two autistic children has already taken place.
I had an autistic son already, sir. We took in another autistic child, so just one.
So you adopted one more?
Yes, sir. I got a guardianship. He's 16 years old, his name's Eli. Uh, he's a good young man, and, uh, he's, uh, he's going to live with us.
It's awesome, too. So there are no dental records, uh, there are no reports from committees and departments under public participation on agenda items. No one has signed up. On the consent agenda, there's eight, if there are any. Number one, to adopt a revised organizational chart. Number two, to adopt a revised job description for county administrator. Number three, to adopt the revised job description for the director of operations. Number four, authorize the chairman to enter into a lease agreement with the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia for the use of Georgia Highlands College for the space located on the third floor of the courthouse. Number five is action to approve the boundary line agreement between Candy Hilton Rollins and Charles McCoy Rollins as co-trustees of the Charles McCoy Rollins Trust in Paulding County, Georgia, for, uh, for property located within land lot nine of the second district, third section of Paulding County, Georgia. Number six is the sheriff's office would like to retire a surplus Lieutenant Mike Christopher service weapon, Glock model 21, Sierra Foxtrot, serial number TYN6589, and present the pistol to Lieutenant Mike Christopher upon his retirement as a symbol of our appreciation for 19 years of service and dedication to the citizens of Paulding County. Number seven is the acceptance of Street, A Street, for perpetual maintenance, which is, uh, at Lost Creek in Unit A Phase One, Lost Creek Club Drive. Number eight is declare a couple of items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through auction and trade. Both are the DOT department, both are thermoplastic hardliners, and one is the make and model ASE Thermo Mark II, and the, um, serial number is 2001067. And the second thermoplastic hardliner is ASE Thermo Mark II, serial number 2001334. So I would ask if any of the Commissioners would like to move any of these items to regular business, new business. Here you go, request for that, the stay on the consent agenda, and we'll move into old business. Number one is discuss action to approve the chairman's nomination of Frank Baker, the position of county administrator, this table from the September 21st, 2017 meeting and the October 10th, 2017 Board of Commissioners meetings. So the, uh, the Board of Commissioners has worked together, collaborated, um, for restructuring of our entire, um, table of organization, which is one of the consent items you just heard. Uh, and that's one of the things that, that we wanted to get in line, not get the cart for the horse, so to speak. And so we have delayed this old business item for a good reason. And we think that the new organizational chart will be, that the county administrator will have, uh, have oversight of, will be much more effective and efficient. Any other comments on this from our Commissioners or Board? Under new business, discuss an action to authorize the chairman to execute a supplemental agreement in the amount of $572,050.56. in the amount of five hundred and seventy-two thousand, fifty dollars and fifty-six cents for the fiscal year 2017 asphalt one contract that was previously awarded on June the twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen to Baldwin Payton Company Incorporated in the amount of three billion six hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. The agreement extends the resurfacing of Seven Hills Boulevard by one point seven five miles to the bridge over Little Pumpkin Vine Creek. And Mr. Green is gone. Any questions or give us any other information? Thanks, Scott.
Great, thank you. Since this is a fairly large increase in this contract, I want to give you a little background on it. As you know, Seven Hills Boulevard is a very long road. It's about three miles extended from Ivy Goldridge to Cedar Crest. And the current contract only pays the two lane double yellow section on the south half mile near Ivy Goldridge. We had hoped that the road would hold up, the middle parts that we were talking about with this extension, until we were able to widen Seven Hills. And that contract is still under design. It's a little bit delayed. That is from Little Pumpkin Vine Creek Bridge up to Cedar Crest. And that will be a major reconstruction project around about. We thought we could include this middle section, or gap I should say, with that future project. But looking at the condition here lately with traffic in and around the transfer station and some of the deterioration, we thought we should approach the contract here and see if we could go ahead and extend the contract and honor their original prices. And they have. They've also negotiated the million price downward. So we're actually getting a little bit cheaper than if we had used the original items. With the condition and a little bit of a date uncertain on the future widening, I think we should go ahead and take care of it at this time. We do have funding available in general fund for paving, so this won't be an overall apartment loan increase. Be glad to answer any questions.
Everybody's good?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
New business item number two. Discuss action to adopt resolution seventeen dash thirty-three, which is a resolution providing for, one, the approval, execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, providing for the sale of the anticipated amount of seventy-two million dollars with the final number to be set on the, with the bond terms on October the twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen today in Pauling County General Obligation Bonds Series twenty-seventeen. And number two, the naming the authenticating agent, the bond register, and paying agent for the said bonds. And the third part, the adoption of the form of which the said bonds shall adhere. And four, the preparation of a tax digest and the levy of a tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on the said bonds. The fifth part, the approval, execution and delivery of a continuing disclosure certificate and official statement relating to the said bonds. Number six, the execution and delivery of said bonds. And number seven, any other related purpose for these general obligation bonds issued for the Pauling County Contention Center project, our jail. So we have Ms. Skipper here beside me and Ms. Pollard and Sheriff Goldridge to address any questions or give us any more information.
And I apologize for the length of the agenda item. I just put most of the purposes of the bond resolution in the title. So there wasn't any confusion. As the title says, this does a couple of things. One is approve the bond purchase agreement, which is essentially approving the issuance of the bonds. They are at market today, which means this evening we will have a bond resolution that will have the final numbers in it. The anticipated amounts, Ms. Pollard will go over a few in a few minutes. You recall this was on the general election ballot in November. It was approved by the voters to issue these bonds for the purpose of the jail. And so this is the next step to that. We did validate these bonds in April already, so that part has already been done. Kind of as it said, this sets the agents and the bond registrar, which are the financial institutions that are going to be dealing with these and adopts the forms of the bond or the actual certificates that will be issued to people that buy them at market. It provides that finance will set the millage rate appropriately for these amounts in future budgets. It approves the official statement and some of the other disclosure certificates that are required for bonds to be sold. And then last but not least, it's going to authorize the chairman to sign all the documents associated with the sale of these bonds, which we should do later on this week. That's my part, that's the finance part.
As Lauren mentioned, the underwriters will be here this afternoon to give you the results of the sale. But what you have in front of you, I think each one of you have the anticipated, this is their best guess. It was done about a couple of days ago. And I anticipate the coverage to range from two percent to five percent. The true interest cost is just over three and a half percent for these bonds. The debt schedule, we'll begin paying for these in February of twenty-eighteen. However, we have a little bit of funding available in the, this year we issued a millage rate of two point oh seven mils for debt service. And that is enough to be able to finance the first year, so the six hundred and ninety-three thousand. And then we, next year, we will also use that plus any fund balance that we have to be able to pay for twenty-eighteen, all of twenty-eighteen, so that you don't actually impose an increase to the millage rate until the year after. And the idea is you'll see a building come out of the ground. Citizens start to pay for it so they can associate one with the other. Once that is taxed though. So it won't get in twenty-eighteen, shouldn't. It will likely be twenty-nineteen. The debt payment schedule is right at four, estimated to be right at four million a year. So that's just under a mil. And you already have a fraction of that that's being imposed. So the increase that the citizens see should be something less than a mil in twenty-nineteen.
Excellent. As soon as we get the final numbers, we will send you an email with those and then that will be on tonight at seven with the final numbers.
The sheriff sporting his hunting beard?
Yeah. A little explanation for this. In our office every year, year in October, November, we do no shade, November. Costs twenty-five dollars a month to do it. If you keep being in uniform, you have to be in class C. This is our training uniform. If you guys go in ready uniform, you guys shave and put twenty-five dollars a month there, apply our fund. Of course, send out flowers for all the problems we have with offices. It's a fund that's always empty. Y'all know about empty funds and we have them too. If anything goes on and we have to go back in uniform, of course, you lose your money and your beard. But I would like to take a few minutes and thank the public. I've heard some, I guess, kind of much the right word for it, that, you know, that people should have been allowed to vote for this jail thing. And I'm thinking, that's exactly what we done. I asked it to be put on the presidential ballot so that it's a time when the most voters in the county came to the polls. It was put on the presidential ballot. It was approved by the majority of the voters, which I really thank them for. It's very much needed. We're in a planning process as now. It's, we're meeting weekly and some of it's so far over your head that you realize pretty quick, you got to hire people smarter than you to get this done. I hope we can break it down sometime in the middle of spring, maybe late spring. They're still saying probably two, two and a half years, so we'll have to complete it. Hopefully we can get it done behind the building. There's a lot of stuff, you know, we run into utilities and it's just, every time you take a step forward, you got to take two steps back and replan. So we're in the process of trying to do that. But I want to go on record and thank the public for their support of this. Thank them for voting for it and trusting us to do it. I hope that it's, I know Mr. Crowe and Commissioner Farnell was on the board with us for picking the people that does this job. We all want the same thing. We want it put out in front. We want to shine a spotlight on it. We want the public's involvement in it. People know what we're doing. We're not hiding and doing anything in the dark. Thank y'all for y'all's time. I know it's, y'all got busy scheduled, but I appreciate y'all taking the time to settle these boards and pick the people that's going to be building this jail. We're extremely happy. We had a meeting two weeks ago. We're trying to get as much local participation so that this tax money is returned back into the community and spent back here again. We hope that works out real well. Everybody was excited to meet you, seemed excited about the project and then was bid on it. And hopefully get some bids, even the smaller companies. If you've got a small company, you don't feel like you could do this big of a job, you know, maybe some of these bigger companies, we can get them to use the smaller companies to come in and do the actual work. We're hoping as much money as possible in this project we can get and return it back to the citizens again. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
You might as well stay there and stay there and respond to me. The next item is to discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a lease agreement with Verizon Wireless to locate a cell tower on Belle Rouge.
Occasionally we get the opportunity to use a piece of land and the cell tower industry will want to just construct the tower and we'll get rental income and it's really not any upkeep to us. So this is one of those. This will be a water system, a water system piece of property where they have a lift station. We have, I think it's a hundred and thirty feet high. There'll be three tenants on there. They're going to, this lease is for ten thousand dollars signing bonus and then a thousand dollars a month. And the water system will be able to use, we will use one of the spaces for AMI for the water system billing. So it's kind of a win-win for us. Any questions?
That's good, Lori. Thank you.
New business number four, discuss action to adopt resolution seventeen dash thirty-four, resolution enacting a moratorium for ninety days on the acceptance of applications for planned residential development, PRD, the zoning category, PRD. So this was kind of a new item and I would ask our lead commissioner, postboard commissioner, Tony Crook, I didn't mention anything to you earlier, but are you comfortable with mentioning that or will I let Ann talk about it?
I'm good with it and I can turn it over to Ann anytime I get to. There's something that's needed to be done here in the county for some times. PRDs were ninety-eight, is that when all this came about? And since then, they have not been corrected at any time. Changes need to be made. And we, and I have recommended we do a moratorium, but this time to readjust things. I talked to some of the other commissioners and they're on board with it. There's something that's much needed here in the county this time. So Ann, if you want to speak on it, I'm good with it. She's going to be handling it.
Yeah, I'll just say that we'll take these ninety days and we're not accepting any applications for PRD zoning, rezoning to make changes to that district.
We're just stepping back and taking a breath and looking. And if we need to add another ninety days, if we don't get it done in this first ninety days, we'll add another ninety days to it.
And Ms. Skipper has some background in continuity and history and I, you don't have to say anything you don't want to.
Well, I mean, I was just going to kind of give you an update of what's in the resolution. It's a very short resolution. It indicates that the planning staff will be looking at the PRD ordinance and looking to do some changes to it, to the ordinance and any related development regulations that may be done. It is a ninety day moratorium on the acceptance of applications for rezoning to PRD. So it wouldn't affect anything that is already submitted and affect things after the period. We can extend it after the original ninety days, but in order for a moratorium to work, you need to put the purpose of it and a timeframe and we thought that ninety days essentially was appropriate.
Any other questions, comments?
You good with the [inaudible]? Guess you got to get busy.
And new business item number five, discuss action to approve the chairman's nomination of Scott Green to the director of operations position. Scott has been with the county for thirteen years and was with the state prior to that. Actually moved here transplant from California and he saw the light when he got here. Lived with his aunt and uncle in Powder Springs and went to Southern Tech where he achieved a degree in civil engineering. I actually met Scott shortly thereafter, working on the Dallas Bypass out here going to Rockport in a typical DOT trailer there off Mount Alouette Road. This young whippersnapper, this newly graduate walked in and it didn't take long to understand how well qualified he was with his ability to survey and plan and just wrote the things on paper. It's been a pleasure, let me say, to work with the board to kind of redevelop, there was a position called Government Services three years ago, redevelop this position and oversight over some of our departments. But I know, and the board will speak up also, that it's not so much oversight as an enhancement to the ability to support our departments at a higher level. So they'll be better represented. And if our departments are better represented in our overall teamwork, framework, then obviously the citizens are going to be better represented in what we get done. Scott does have his PE. He's registered back in nineteen ninety-eight. So he's got twenty-seven total years of engineering experience and again, a lot of continuity background and just knowledge about what's going on in Pauling County. He, this position will be used for a lot of special projects and not just work with the departments, but with his continuity and background, I've already identified eight-plus projects that I would like to see take off in the next few months. So that's an extra thing that he'll carry. Lastly, he met his wife at Russell Street Baptist Church, lived with her for twenty-nine years and had two sons and a daughter. And I found him to be one of the most responsive people that I've ever worked with.
I'll speak up. I'll speak up also. Chairman Carmichael says it's been one of the most pleasurable things we've worked on and without a doubt, that's the truth. All this ties in together with the new organizational flow chart with Mr. Baker coming on board and Scott moving up. And it's just amazing the amount of work we've accomplished and gotten done during our executive session and everybody being just in step together and everybody just in agreement with this. And we just kept tweaking and tweaking until it just came out the way it is. We are all feel really good about it. Think it's going to be the best thing for the county and we're ready to move on.
You know, there's a saying, it's amazing what you can get done when nobody cares and gets the credit. And I've enjoyed the last, maybe not enjoyed, it's the same as the citizens go along sometimes. But it's been a real pleasure to work with you guys on this. I'm excited about kind of this direction. I know Dave, you've been asking for help for a while and there's been a lot of back and forth on that. I think we've, I think we've got it right and I'm looking forward to just move on.
And I was glad to jump the flow chart on [inaudible].
I think it's, I think it's going to be good. I think, you know, not everybody agrees on everything one hundred percent. That's just the way it is. And I always say that, you know, get home at the dinner table. Not everything's agreed upon at the dinner table either. But as a family, you move forward from the dinner table and do what you need to do. And I feel like with the new positions that we have, I hope it's an enhancement for the department heads and I hope it's an enhancement to see, to get projects done and things maybe that have fallen by the wayside and not gotten done. So I know the chairman says he's got a list of eight. I think that's a little shy. I think there's quite a few things I'm joking about, but I think there's quite a few things that we've talked about a lot. So hopefully Scott and Frank together will be able to take the bull by the horns and get some things done. These ninety day projects, we can get done quick and move through and do what we need to do. But we look at it as, you know, there's all kinds of personalities out there, but I look at it as an enhancement to try to get things done. And it's not about somebody being in charge over somebody. A good leader A good leader, a good department head leader doesn't have to be the boss. They just need to do what's right and lead. And before you know it, you'll have people follow. I think that's what it is with a father with a family, and I think that's what it is with leadership in a church. And I think that's what it is with leadership at work. And so I hope that, I hope that these two positions will, even though we may not all agree on everything, that they'll lead us in a positive direction and everything will be done out front and that everybody, all the department heads will know, no matter who you so-called report to, that you can go to either one of these men and you can go to any commissioner and talk to, talk to them, see that we get things done and on the right track, whatever that is. So I expect Scott and Frank to work together hard. And you've got a lot to get done. So I'm looking, I'm looking forward to it. But as far as the process is, process is going, I think it's been a class act, what we've been able to get done. Really, I know it's been talked about since the first year, but there's been a lot of changes and here we are at this. I think the process has been great. It's been real refreshing, so.
And I'd like to thank Brian Hacker because he sure helped us a lot during that process. He came through, Brian, appreciate it.
All right. Couple of halibut rounds, I've known to call them. You always, when you introduce people or you recognize people, you leave somebody out. Pastor Johnny McBurns, he probably does as much for Paulding County as anybody I've ever known. So it's great to have you here. And I'd like to call Ms. Skipper to make an announcement about a public hearing.
This afternoon at 2:00, we do have the planning commission. And the last item on that agenda is the public hearing for changes to the sign ordinance. Drafts of that have gone out. It is not on your agenda this evening for adoption because the idea was that we were going to take the public comment at 2:00. We would get that input, we'd get some more input from the commissioners, and it'll be on your agenda in two weeks for adoption in its final version. So we're hoping that today we might get some more comment that we can use in the ordinance itself.
Well, that's a conclusion of our regular business in under an hour. Good job. And we do have an executive session requirement for real estate personnel pending and potential litigation, and we'll decide on that order out in the hallway here. We had no participation today on non-agenda items. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I adjourn to adjourn.
I adjourn to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn back to executive session for real estate personnel and pending and potential petitions.
Second.
Motion in second. Again, we will adjourn to executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive session. So we are back in regular session, but we want to make a motion to complete some of the agenda that we haven't finished yet. So do you hear a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we take a recess from executive session and go back into executive session after planning and zoning. And I'll make a second to that.
Have a motion in the second to recess from executive session and then return after the planning and zoning meeting. So we do not interrupt that schedule. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In recess, we take your session.
I make a motion that we adjourn back to executive session. Second, go back into executive session.
Motion is second, return to executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourn to executive session. All right, we'll call the regular session back to order. And during the executive session, there was no action taken. And we do have a motion that will be presented, so present the motion, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Smith Connery LLP to send a notice letter to the PCAA, Paulding County Airport Authority, and to be able to take all necessary steps to protect the county's interest as it relates to the proposed cutting of timber at the Paulding County Airport.
Woo, thank you.
We have a motion, do you hear a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
No, I had it for 7:00 PM, yes. Just to clarify.
A motion to add.
To the agenda.
Yep.
And can you read the end of that again, please? Or just read the whole thing again?
Motion to authorize Smith Connery LLP to send a notice letter to the Paulding County Airport Authority and to take all necessary steps to protect the county's interest as it relates to the proposed cutting of timber at the Paulding County Airport.
Okay. And we have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Discussion?
Already called it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I just, I just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that the citizens' interest at the airport is protected and that our environment is protected for today, tomorrow, for us, for our kids, our grandkids, and in the future. I want to make sure that we're doing what needs to be done.
Any other comments? Okay. Take a vote, you know, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five o'clock. Any additional?
Yes. I would like to make a motion that we add to the consent agenda, a call planning commission meeting for next month to be held on November 28th at 2:00 PM. And the reason for that is because we had some signage that was, had some errors in the signage, and then we had four of our, four of our citizens that were not able to be heard today because of the error in the signage. And it was our mistake. And so I want to have a call meeting on November 28th at 2:00 PM.
I have a motion to have a call meeting of the...
It's a motion to add that to the consent agenda. So you'll actually, it'll be within the consent agenda, it'll be voted on tonight.
Right. So a motion to have what Commissioner Farnell said on the agenda for tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crowe. Any further discussion?
Only question I'll ask, does that include all the advertisement necessary? Does that need to be said?
Yes, it'll, it'll.
It'll, what will happen is they will advertise for that meeting in the paper for the four weeks that's required. There's enough time to do that. So it would be all the applications that are currently pending.
Okay.
So we have a motion in the second to have that on the agenda for tonight. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five o'clock. Is there any additional motions or consideration for the voting session tonight?
No, thank you.
You mean now, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, second to adjourn, we'll reconvene. Call the night meeting to order at 7:00. We are adjourned tonight.